I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Ms. Garza, roll call please. Ms. Garza stepped out. Oops. So actually, I can do the roll call, can I? I guess I can, we'll find out. Mr. O’Hanlon.
President.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
I’ll say you. Mr. DiMaria.
I’m right here.
Good. Ms. Seberg.
Here.
Ms. Dung.
Here.
Mr. Aljade.
Mr. Williams is here.
Thank you. Ms. Garza.
Are there additions and deletions to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, on the consent agenda, please add personnel, ratification of personnel.
Right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is superintendent’s announcements and spotlight, I believe there’s one spotlight. Mrs. Radford, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Newman, good evening, good evening to other members of the board, and good evening to our audience tonight. I do stand before you to share our spotlights and announcements on this evening. We basically have one announcement that we would like to make, so I don’t need to have board members come down with me on this evening. But we would like to publicly acknowledge the V S B A Academy Awards. The Virginia School Boards Association recognizes school board members for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardmanship skills through V S B A meetings, conferences, board development and training, and for active involvement in the association. Board members earn credits for V S B A Academy Awards, which are based on their participation in V S B A-sponsored events or activities from July 1st to June 30th of each year. Locally, our board members have participated in events such as webinars, workshops, legislative advocacy conferences, regional spring network forums, hot topic conferences, conference on education, and V S B A’s annual convention. As president of the V S B A, our own Mr. Scott Albrecht is a frequent speaker at various conferences here in Virginia and also with the National School Boards Association, so we are represented on the national stage as well. The V S B A Academy Awards are presented annually to school board members and superintendents and/or staff members who meet the requirements of each level. So we have several awards to present tonight. The awards for M C P S this year are as follows, and I will just announce them, and then I will share the certificates and pins with the clerk for distribution later. Award of recognition, Robin Albrecht, I’m sorry, Robin Williams and Alvegarza, sorry about that. Ms. Williams and Alvegarza. Award of achievement, Lee Miller and Al Radford. Award of excellence, Dr. Kevin Newman, Chairman Sanford Williams, Mr. Peter O’Hanlon, Vice-Chairwoman Kristin Kiefer, and Mr. Tim DiMaria. And then the award of distinction, which also includes a certificate and starfish pin, is for Mr. Scott Albrecht and for Ms. Suzanne Seberg. So each of you will receive a certificate and a pin, and as I stated before, I will share these with the clerk. But certainly, you know, a lot of our families and students may see you in the schools and, you know, attending so many of the events and things like that, but we certainly want them to know that you also participate in professional development for yourselves as board members, so that you can serve our community to the best of your ability. So we just want to say thank you publicly for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radford, appreciate that. And I’ve done this before, but I’ll do it again even though it probably embarrasses him. I don’t know how Mr. Albrecht puts in so much time at the current school board level, which is a lot, takes a lot of time, is time-consuming, and then at the state level as well, and he has a regular job too, and a wife, so he’s very busy. So thank you very much for your service, we appreciate that.
Sure.
All right, next on the agenda, board committee reports, academics committee, Chairman Suzanne Seberg.
We have not met.
Okay. Educational support committee, no report is assigned, respond.
We have, we have not met.
Policy committee, Chairman Kristin Kiefer.
We presented three policies at the last board meeting for discussion, it’s on the consent agenda tonight.
Thank you. Finance committee, Chairman Scott Albrecht.
While we have had a committee meeting, Mr. Chair, I would point out that the amended budget that this board took action on, on the 26th of June, is presently scheduled after the proper process activities on the part of council to be potentially ratified on the 24th of September. That budget is the budget that appropriates the additional $303,000 of state funding. Additionally related to that, the city manager last night gave a report on the joint committee we had and where we are with respect to a potential joint agreement. Several members of council and the manager encouraged members of the community to come out tomorrow night and potentially next Wednesday night to hear council deliberate these things. I personally would also encourage people to, and to look at where we are if the priority of local government or of government in general is education, public safety, and infrastructure. We should look at where our city priorities are with respect to education. The city appropriation for funding in 2006 was $6,265 per student. Twelve years later, in 2018, it was $6,217, less money per student before inflation. In that period of time, our economically challenged students rose from 23% to 63%. The schools have no choice but to delegate to students that live in the city of Manassas. Our council makes the decisions with respect to land use. Our council makes economic investment decisions. That’s where it is. We’re in an environment where rent is the same, and it’s economically advantageous to have rental properties in the city of Manassas because of our tax structure. I would encourage citizens to get involved.
Thank you, Ms. Albrecht. Personnel committee, Chairman Robin Williams.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, comments, board member comments, and I will start with Mr. Aljade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to spend today talking about joining community service. Participating in community service and other extracurricular activities is a great way to connect and give back to the community that has given a lot to you. And right now, there is no better time than high school to join clubs and organizations because it helps you stand out from others, and really helps your resume look better than those who sit back and don’t do anything. Fortunately, Osborne has many different types of clubs, great clubs to join. The one club I’m going to shout out today is Interact Club. They are a student-run, community-service club, and it’s great fun to be in, I’m director of it, and we are like one big family. We go to all these fun events, and it doesn’t feel like community service, you feel like you’re helping others. We always go to other schools, we help them with their after-school events, we go to the marathon runs around here, we help set those up, and many other events too. So I encourage everyone to join, everyone in Osborne to join. The next meeting will be on September 25th, after school in the lecture room. Hope to see everyone interested there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dung.
I’d love to agree with Mr. Aljade, it really is a great club, and I’m glad to see that everyone survived the first few weeks of school. It really has been fun. I encourage you all to look into your school’s activities as well, and the school events that are starting up. Metz Middle School will be having a back-to-school night tomorrow at 6:30, so keep that in mind. Also, Osborne just recently scored a touchdown at our last football game, and Baldwin Elementary hosted their first movie night of the year this past Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, good points. Next, Mrs. Williams.
Well, Ms. Dung and Mr. Aljade, thank you so much for your comments, I look forward to hearing them every day. Yes, touchdown. And as far as the V S B A Academy certificates go, I do want to say we each do spend a lot of time going down to Richmond, going to Charlottesville, in fact, next week Suzanne and I are going to Legislative Initiative Conference down in Charlottesville. So it is, it’s time-consuming, I appreciate what everybody here does. Some of us can do more than others, and those who do do pick up the plate and make it all spin, so thank you all for everything that you do. During our moment of silence, I remembered the lives that we lost 17 years ago. Like many here today, I remember exactly where I was, I remember my exact thoughts, and I remember that day like it was yesterday. No matter who you were, no matter where you came from, this entire nation came together. Together, we prayed, together we cried, together we honored every hero that day, and together, let us never forget. I’d like to conclude by sharing my favorite quote from that day 17 years ago. “The attacks of September 11th were intended to break our spirit; instead, we have emerged stronger and more unified. We left renewed devotion to the principles of political, economic, and religion freedom, and the rule of law and respect for human life. We are more determined than ever to live our lives in freedom.” That was written by Rudy Giuliani, and it just really does take me back to that time where this entire nation as a whole was united, and I’d like to see us as a nation continue that. And that’s all I have to say, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to do a shout-out to Osborne High School academic team, they will be going to NBC4 Studios in Washington, DC on December, or September 22nd, for a taping of the It’s Academic Show. And you’ll all be able to view that on NBC4 on October 13th. Mrs. Williams has already mentioned that we’re going to the Legislative Advocacy Conference later this month, and when we’re talking about remembering from 17 years ago, we all remember, and I remember. And I remember I was walking with a friend and our infant babies down on Winter's Branch Trail behind Jenny Dean Elementary, when I got a call to go home and turn on the TV. And for several days, I sat in front of that TV rocking my baby, in shock and disbelief of what had happened. My heart goes out to all of those that lost a loved one on that fateful day. But I’m also filled with hope and promise, because those two little babies from 17 years ago, together with their classmates, will graduate Osborne High School this year, the class of 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O’Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to welcome our new superintendent to the city of Manassas, he’s officially a resident of the city of Manassas now, so welcome. We’re glad to have you with us day in and day out, 24 hours a day now, so welcome to Manassas. And I just want to echo what everyone else has said about September 11th, it’s hard to believe that almost virtually none of our students in this school were alive at that time, and, you know, only seniors were newborn children at that time. So we need to make sure we keep talking to the future generations to know, tell them our experiences, share with them what happened, what we were feeling, like everyone else has said, you know, how we all came together that day, I mean, it is something we need to remember and commemorate. Thank you.
Thank you. I’m Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and certainly I would be remiss if I didn’t start with a remembrance of September 11th 17 years ago. In the interest of turning it positive, not only should we remember all of the victims at that date and the days to follow as things happened, but it’s a time to thank those who serve us every day, our police, our firefighters, our active-duty military. There are many people who put themselves in harm’s way or make this country better every day, and it’s a time to thank them. As far as comments, I was at the Senate Local Government School Facility Modernization Subcommittee last week, had a chance to speak with several senators, we went on tours of Prince William County and Arlington County as well. And here’s just, you know, you put things in perspective, the senator from Southwest, who is the committee chair, commented that Prince William County C I P budget is eight times greater than his county’s school budget. Throughout the Commonwealth, there are facilities that greatly need modernization. At the state level, what they talked about is, several years ago, the Senate, the House passed an infrastructure roads bill, and certainly we built more than enough detention facilities across the Commonwealth. But the state of Virginia also recognizes they are funding education less today than 10 and 15 years ago. It’s interesting to listen to the political spin, this is not about new taxes, it’s about what apparently is called the Wayfair windfall, or for those of us who understand, the charging of sales tax on those things purchased over the internet. Because it turns out, for those people who bought over the internet, if you did not reimburse the Commonwealth of Virginia for your sales tax, you are a tax scofflaw. The requirement has always been to pay the tax. Now they’re going to push that requirement onto merchants. The question is what to do with that revenue, and there appeared to be some element of the Senate and the House that are willing to say now is the time to invest in schools. The devil will be in the details, I look forward to working with the Subcommittee as we go forward on that. Next week, I also will be at the Virginia Chambers Workforce Conference, keynote speakers are Tim Kaine, and really, kind of fun for me, it’s a gentleman I worked with many years ago, Dave Zollet, who’s now the president of LMI, so I get a chance to reconnect with him, so I’m looking forward to spending a day next week in Richmond. Finally, as we talk about local government, and the length it takes us to make decision, I want to caution all of us about paralysis by analysis. We have spent a long time thinking about things. I used to wear a green suit, and as an officer, I was told, taught and instilled in me to do, don’t sit back. I’d like to encourage all of us at the local level to do that too.
Thank you. Mr. DiMaria.
Thank you, sir, I’ll try and keep it short since Mr. Albrecht’s been talking now for a half hour, with his two stints. But everything he said, he’s right. And I want to thank him for all the time he does put in. The chairman is absolutely right, the president of the V S B A puts in a ton of time here and there, the chairman of our finance committee puts in a ton of time here and there, and we thank you very much, sir. Suzanne, that starfish pin, I’ve been on the board for, this is my 13th year, and I’ve had it, I won that never. It takes a lot of time. Thank you very much. And when I used to call you Mrs. Sebeski, there was a reason. She always got the pin, and you’re getting the pin now, so thank you for your time, we really appreciate that. What Mr. Albrecht said about the meeting tomorrow night with funding, if you didn’t, when he was running through his numbers, realize that when I started on this board, nearly, over 12 years ago, the per pupil allotment was more than it is today. They’re close numbers, but it was more, and we’re not talking inflation or anything else. We got more in 2006 than we do in 2018. Last night, we were here for the city council meeting, and Chief Clemens, our chief of fire and rescue, presented seven new fire and medics. And I can’t remember his words, word for word. The city council meetings are on the internet, go to their site and search it and find it, and listen to what the chief said. It was very moving, especially being the day before 9/11. We’re lucky to have Chief Clemens working for us, and all of his people putting their lives on the line for us, as well as our police officers. As far as 9/11 goes, yeah, I remember where I was and all of that, and I also remember the weeks and maybe months afterwards, how much we liked each other. And it doesn’t happen that much anymore. We’re always at odds. Going into 7/11, everybody was friendly, everybody. We were all on the same page. I know that’s too much to ask, to be exactly that way, but be kind to one another. It’s so much easier than being mean, and it makes us better people, so try to do that. Sir, are you going to mention the game? The game has been moved from Friday night to Thursday night, the football game, and we will score more than one touchdown. It will be at Garfield, do you know the time? Is it going to be 7? It’s usually 7:30 on Friday nights, but when it’s through the week, they usually move it to 7 o’clock, so 7 o’clock, I believe, but it will be at Garfield on Thursday night, per the chairman, if that’s wrong, he’s the one that told me. Thank you, sir.
Actually, it was superintendent who told me, so.
There you go, right up the line, baby.
Yes, exactly. Deflect the blame. But check online. Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, and I’ll be brief as well. I think a lot has been said, as I reflect it from what our student liaisons said all the way to the school board members tonight, I think it comes up to three things that I think about when we think about 9/11 and all of the things that people have set up here. Focus on what’s most important in your life. You know, it’s a day, unfortunately, you reflect upon that and take a step back on, much like we don’t do on other days when we should. It’s about service to each other, whether you’re in the school serving our kids or serving the community, driving around the state, you know, it’s about service and it’s about engagement, to all the comments tonight about the importance of us getting out and talking to our council and talking to our school boards about what it is we demand as a community. We’ve just got to activate around the issues that are important to us. So that, for me, is kind of everything I heard summed up by everybody here tonight, and I appreciate that, we all share that. You know, a lot of us both lost people we knew in 9/11, but got to see the good side of it and watched people we loved go help in 9/11. So it’s a day that you can reflect on both the ugliest thing in the world, as well as the most beautiful thing, to Mr. DiMaria’s point. So we just keep continuing to plug away together, I thank personally those who’ve served this country and continue to do so. And also, Mr. Albrecht, just a special shout-out, I don’t think you realize the magnitude of what you do, both for the state, for our students, but for us as school board members. You’ve been and continue to be a mentor to me, and I am forever grateful. So thank you.
Thank you. I guess I’ll conclude. I didn’t prepare any comments tonight, I figured I’d just kind of freestyle it, basically about 9/11. So I work in DC, and I remember the building I work in, I can clearly see the Pentagon, and just seeing it up in flames, it was a shock. Folks running around the building and, you know, not knowing what was going to happen next. Then also, I remember New York City, because I was in a meeting with folks from around the country in our building, and folks in the commission meeting room said, you know, come see the TV. And I grew up in the New York City area, lived in New York City before I came down this way, and seeing those buildings that I grew up with all my life tumbling down, I said, this real feeling I’ll never forget. And having family members, all my family lived up there at the time. My brother worked right near the World Trade Center, and just thinking about what was going on was just, you know, a horrible feeling. But thinking about all of that, I think that one thing we should do is like Mr. O’Hanlon said, don’t forget, because it was a terrible thing, think about the things that were up to it, what we can do to kind of prevent the feelings in our nation of folks who are asinine to do something like that. We should also be thankful for what we have. We live in a country where we have freedoms which we often take for granted, where we can have discourse for years and years about building a school, and other things which are really important. And we can do that respectfully, peacefully, usually respectfully, but that’s something important that everyone doesn’t have. And then the other thing I think about is hope. My brother who lived in New York City, he fled the city, he moved to Canada after that because he just was traumatized by it. But notwithstanding, he still had hope for this country, for the things that we could do. The kindness that folks showed back home in New York, where lots of folks passed away, and our first responders who were so brave, there were so many of them who suffer or have died because they inhaled things or ingested things or have cancer and other things that we kind of don’t pay enough attention to, but our first responders and our police officers, our med techs, our emergency folks, some of them gave their lives just to help out, and we don’t often acknowledge those folks, but they should be, like as Tim mentioned earlier. But the overarching thing, I think, is a dream and a hope that going forward, we can all treat each other with the same respect and love and kindness that we had then. It shouldn’t be reserved for, you know, just occasions where, you know, folks are going through something. It doesn’t take any time or energy to be kind to someone or to be nice to someone or to listen to someone, and hopefully the overarching lesson is that we take those thoughts and those feelings and live our everyday lives in that way. We can disagree respectfully and engage in respectful discourse without being evil to one another. So I hope we don’t forget it, it’s scary that it’s 17 years ago, because it seems like yesterday, I can vividly what I did and how I got home, and it’s kind of scary that time flies by so fast, but it’s very important that we don’t, our children forget what happened. And again, we instill that hope for tomorrow in all our kids and all our citizens. But those are my comments and reflections. Next up, the consent agenda, may I have a motion? Oh, I almost did it again. Citizen comments, are there any citizen comments? All right. Hearing none, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move adoption of the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have at 7-0. Next up, discussion agenda, personnel, Ms. Billy K. Wingfield will talk about the division-wide instructional updating for staffing.
Good evening. Tonight I will be sharing with you the current instructional staff vacancies in the division. As we all know, there is a national teacher shortage. Critical shortage areas, as defined by the Virginia Department of Education, are special education, elementary education, middle education, career and technical education, mathematics grades 6 through 12, school counselor, English, science, foreign language, and health and P E. We currently have 9.2 instructional vacancies. With the exception of two positions, our openings parallel the statewide critical shortage areas. At the present time, there is one elementary instructional opening, which is a library-media specialist at Baldwin Elementary School. At the intermediate level, we have four openings. ESOL, which is a new position that was created on August 15th due to the needs of our students, and we have three positions at Mayfield Intermediate, which is being covered by long-term substitute teachers. At Metz, we have 2.8 openings. We are currently using substitutes, but will be utilizing Apex, a one-to-one online module very soon. We’ve used Apex in the past. At Osborne High School, we have 1.4 openings in math, we’re using Apex for instruction, and a long-term sub is providing the science position instruction. We continue to screen and actively interviewing for these positions. We will be recruiting at ODU, Penn State, and Appalachian State University in October and November.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Albrecht.
Ms. Wingfield.
Ms. Ari.
What I’m thinking, as you went through, I’m also suggesting what’s not critical, right, as we talk, what the state says is critical, but for the purpose of those who hopefully are listening, and the parents out there, 9.2 positions, we have a plan. Children are being educated through some combination of long-term subs with the appropriate supervision, some kind of blended online learning capability, and if you look at our subs, our vacancies that we have at the start of the school year, 9.2, relative to our staffing, and you compare it to other jurisdictions around us, would it be safe to say we have significantly fewer vacancies or about the same number of pro-rata vacancies as everybody else?
I’d say we have plenty of company. That’s what I would say, because there are shortages, there are vacancies across the state. And, you know, even, you know, I know, like, while I can’t speak, I know Fairfax had many vacancies last year, so, you know, if your child is in that classroom, every vacancy you fill, but, you know, last year, we had, we were pulling coaches out and putting them into the classrooms. This year, every teacher, every instructional person is in their own classroom. So that is a good thing.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Wingfield. And we are done with our regular agenda, on to a closed session, may I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-31, 3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion of personnel matters, P E R S 1819-0123.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mr. Albrecht, the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 4 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion of the protection of privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business, P E R S 1819-0123. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it 7-0. We are in closed session.